To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are the St. John R. Two Board of Education norms available. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four regular open session meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the MSBA monthly report.
Welcome to the January edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report, and Happy New Year. Twenty twenty-three was a year marked by technological advancements, but the year will likely be remembered as artificial intelligence's breakout year. Regardless of district size or location, AI has the potential to reshape the landscape of learning and teaching. And in the past year, some of those indications started to emerge. Sadie St. Lawrence was the keynote speaker for the first general session of the twenty twenty-three MSBA Annual Conference held in November. Sadie is the founder and CEO of Women in Data, the number-one community for women in AI and tech. During the conference, Sadie provided an overview of what AI is and its current influence on education, including both its positive contributions and potential pitfalls. At the end of the session, MSBA Executive Director Melissa Randall joined Sadie for an engaging Q and A that touched on a wide variety of topics in the world of AI. The digital divide was a topic of concern regarding Internet access as well as AI.
Yes, I definitely see it as increasing that digital divide, and I think that's a key portion of why we need to address it now, right? If someone doesn't have Internet access today or access to a computer and a device, and then they graduate and they come into college or go into the workplace, they're going to feel very left behind when everybody's already used to talking to their AI assistants and used to working alongside them. So I think, you know, as educators, but as those looking at the future of our children, we really have to make sure we're addressing that digital divide now because it's like anytime you have a hole in your pants, or it just gets bigger from there, right? So making sure that we're addressing the problem today before it starts to expand.
Sadie also addressed some of the innovations and potential in AI that can benefit education.
Yeah, the one I am still so passionate about is the personalized learning. I think anyone who has experience as a teacher would love to spend one-on-one time with students, would love to give everyone that tailored experience to understand and listen to their questions. And so I'm so excited about what this enables, just because we need individuals who are able to meet the student where they are so that they can get that best next enhancement. There's far-off things that I'm also really excited about though, which is like, how do we combine AI with also the metaverse and exploring different worlds and different realms in a really visual and interactive way? You know, we know that individuals learn all different ways, whether that's visual, audio, tactile. How do we start to integrate that into even a more personalized learning? And so I think it'll be really interesting in the next, like, five years to see how personalized tutoring with potentially virtual environments starts to really expand our capabilities and what we can do.
The full Q and A portion of Sadie's presentation is available on the AI Resources page of the MSBA website. The AI Resources page also has a basic overview of artificial intelligence and many links to find more information concerning AI in education, government, the world of safety and security, and much more. And don't miss a webinar on July twenty-ninth titled "Deep Fakes and AI's Impact on Local Elections." There will be an overview of AI and a discussion with leaders from MSBA, the Missouri Municipal League, and the Missouri Association of Counties about the use of AI in local elections. Visit the MSBA website for details. The twenty twenty-four regular session of the Missouri Legislature convenes this month, and education bills are likely to be a major part of the legislative agenda this year. The MSBA Delegate Assembly gathered on Friday, November third, in conjunction with the twenty twenty-three MSBA Annual Conference in Kansas City. Delegates approved amendments to two existing advocacy positions and five new advocacy positions. These positions are now part of MSBA's overall advocacy positions, the collection of statements that guide MSBA's advocacy on state and federal legislation. The new and amended positions can be found on the MSBA website by visiting the MSBA Action Center. MSBA will keep you informed about legislative developments throughout the session through our weekly Legislative Voice Newsletter, through critical issue alerts, and through periodic webinars. And don't miss your chance to visit your legislator at the Capitol during MSBA's Advocacy Day. Known formerly as Legislative Forum, Advocacy Day is scheduled for April ninth in Jefferson City. The event will be preceded by a spring virtual meeting on March thirteenth and lunch and learn sessions on Fridays to provide legislative updates on the issues that matter to you. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in February for the next MSBA Board Report.
Next, we have the consent agenda. A motion to approve the consent agenda items is presented.
A second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have guidelines for public participation. Board members and administrators will listen to concerns and will respond where appropriate by mail or telephone at a later date. In order to speak during public participation, a public comment form must be filled out and submitted to the board president prior to the beginning of the meeting. Per policy BDDH dash one, public participation at board meetings, the following rules will apply to the public comment portion of the meeting. The public comment period will not exceed fifteen minutes. No individual will be permitted to speak more than once during this period. Each speaker will be allotted to more than five minutes. Discussion will be limited to items from the posted agenda. All speakers must provide their name and address prior to speaking. If there is insufficient time for everyone to speak, the board will encourage participants to submit their questions in writing or utilize the process for putting an item on the agenda. I do not have any public comment.
Nor do I.
Thank you, Senator. Next, we have the report of the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
First on the superintendent's report is the annual school board election, filing closed on December twenty-sixth at five P M. We had two people come in that last day and file, so on the ballot will be Mr. David Bova, Mrs. Geraldine Diesel, Mr. Mike Wolk, and Mr. Norman Boe. And that election will be Tuesday, April second. Just another reminder that St. Genevieve Elementary School will have their kindergarten registration on March second from eight A M. to two P M. And Bloomsdale Elementary School will have their kindergarten registration on March twenty-third from eight A M. to one P M. Appointments will begin being accepted on Monday, February fifth, so you'll want to get those calls in and get those kiddos registered. I am going to turn it over to Dr. McClard for the annual performance report and graduation rate. Take it over.
Oh, boy.
Just as soon as you touch it.
He set that up. It couldn't have been any better.
While he's setting that up, I do want to remind you, the portion of this that's not really in there is what we talked about last month with our, with our actual scores from the E O Cs and the grade level assessments. And remind you that our performance overall was very good, and the, the distance between us and the state actually grew as well. So when we're talking about our performance, there's a category named "performance," but it's not traditional performance in, well, how did they score? It's all these other categories are lumped into one and called "performance." So.
I'm going to hang on to it.
Okay. Go ahead. So M CIP six, it's important to remember that we did switch over to M CIP six and just to remind you that it is a statewide system for accountability, and it sets the goals for ensuring that every student is ready for success post-graduation, and it combines our A P R with our local data as well. And so measures of progress for Missouri students towards adopted state board of education standards is pretty par for the course. The one thing that has changed is that, well, maybe not changed, but the one thing that's important to remember is that it's one data point. So this is a report that the state sends out. A lot of newspapers and media want to grab hold of it, and that's what they want to push out for the next month, but really, our school story doesn't happen just with one report, one set of data. Now, I will say, it is a, a piece of data that schools should use and look at and reflect on, like, okay, we ended up here. Why did we end up here? Let's dig into that and, and make decisions based on that. So we do have an innovation waiver, so it's important to point out that as part of the Student Success Ready Network, that we did pursue a demonstration project. So with that demonstration project, our goal is to demonstrate another system for accountability that more accurately reflects what our students are doing in school. So that's for three years, so that will be through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our district accreditation would remain the same. Currently, with our scores, that really doesn't matter. We would end up being the same accreditation anyways, but that's important to note as we are trying to look at different methods to see how we're doing. Creation is a more meaningful way to measure, so we really want to focus on learning, growth, and status. And when you look at this report, you'll see those words, but as I bring up later, I don't think they're quite the definition that we would think on surface level as far as what that means. So the key components in the innovation waiver is that we're going to, we're going to track growth multiple times throughout the year. Currently, the way the system's set up is we're going to test you at the end of the year, and the way that we're going to figure out growth is we are going to compare your scores to a whole slew of scores that just came in this year, and then we are also going to use your past scores in math and E L A. to determine this is what your growth score should be for E L A. The way we use this is frankly more common sense. It's, you scored this at the beginning of the year, let's have a projected goal for you mid-year. Are you there? No, let's adjust. You are there? Okay, let's keep figuring out what worked, and let's keep doing it, and then let's test again in the spring. And then we look at, as we come back in fall, well, they ended the year on this, here's where they should end up, given that we do have some summer regression. But it gives us more meaningful data that we can act on real time, which leads us to the second bullet, immediate timely feedback for all parties. The goal of this innovation waiver is, we don't want to depend on just one test, even when we're talking about multiple times throughout the year. What we want to be able to do as educators is be able to assess where is the student real time, make real-time adjustments. You know, we're just talking about playoff games for football. Coaches want to make real-time adjustments. They don't wait until just halftime. They don't wait until the end of the game and say, well, next game we'll get them and we'll do this. If they see something's not working, they try to adjust right then and there. Now, when there's natural breaks, say like a Christmas break, that's a good time to kind of recalibrate and really dig into, maybe I should adjust this, maybe I could do that, just like it is for a halftime or the end of the game. Student awareness of status and engagement and setting goals. So this is another goal of the innovation waiver is we want to partner up with those that are being educated. So it's no longer just top-down, we're telling you what you're learning, and you're learning it because we said so. It's, this is why it's important. Where are you at? Here's the next steps to get to where you want to go. Here's a plan to do it. And again, sports analogy, when we're thinking about that, if a coach lays out the steps for a student to be, or for an athlete to become a better player and says, well, first you need to work on ball handling, and now you need to work on your left hand, now you need to work on your layups, now work on your free throw. Like, if they have a checklist of, if I can do this, then I can move to the next level. And we think about like video games. Why are they so successful for kids? Because they get that immediate feedback right away, and they're able to take that learning, like, well, I didn't pass that stage, apply it to the next time they play, and eventually they get there. So that immediate feedback engages them in their own learning as well. Different pathways and varied pacing to assist in active student learning. Basically, we want to be able to adjust the way that we're teaching. If a student's ready, we want to be able to dive in with them and go, okay, well, you kind of got this. Why don't we dig a little bit deeper into this topic here? Or, oh, we need to slow down a little bit because you're missing one of these foundational pieces. Let's make sure that you get this before we just move on because the pacing chart says so. Assessing student progress based on evidence of mastery. Rather than having a set, I give this test at this time to all twenty-five of my students, it's, you're, you've demonstrated mastery, you've shown me along the way. I don't, here, answer these couple of questions. You've got it. I don't need to have you sit down and take a formalized test in two weeks, like, we've got this. Engaging students in real-world, real-world learning. This piece is a piece that I think we definitely are already doing. A lot of these we're already doing, is just doing more of it. So thinking about, well, how can we make our learning in our classroom really, really reflect what's happening in the real world? Like, why am I using this? Why do I have to learn this? And that's the time-old question by a student, right? And if we can connect it to projects or real-world learning or something that's meaningful to them, they're more likely to remember it and use it versus, I've got to remember it for the test, now I can move on. All right, with all that being said, we're right here for M CIP six. We're on year two, and so the data is being reported. Classification right now is not being lowered due to A P R. performance. Ours would not have lowered anyways. So the updates, the percentages that we're using are currently seventy percent for performance, thirty percent for continuous improvement, and then best practices are just items that the district does to make sure that we're following laws and some of our policies and procedures. It doesn't account for a percent of M CIP, but it's still important. I do think it's important to note, the, the board report that we just watched said that bills are coming up. I just read one saying there's a bill out there that I think wants to change continuous improvement to as much as sixty percent for some of this status. So it is important to kind of look and see what the legislators are talking about because then that will become a state law, not a D E thing. Historically, you can see that we had A P R. up to two thousand and eighteen, and then, you know, things happened, and we came back to school and were able to start doing A P R. But you can see, the system before M CIP five, we did very well, but then they changed the system, so you can't really compare what's going on now to two thousand and fourteen. And so our current historical perspective, I guess I deleted that slide, I don't know. Well, let's see if I have it in here. I guess not. So right now, our performance is seventy percent. So if you break that down, you have twenty-four percent of the status is achievement. So that's basically where do they end up? If we take all the student scores averaged on, this is what we got. Is it basic, below basic, proficient, advanced? And so the next piece of that, I think if you hit it next, it'll go, growth achievement. There was a two-hour webinar that I think I've watched twice, and I've read it. Dr. Eric Parsons from ZU is one of the people that came up with the, with the method for, for this regression model, I think. There's a lot of statistical analysis. I think they make four adjustments with their statistics in order to rectify some of the issues with it. But basically, in this growth achievement, they are ranking everybody based on what they predict you should make and then assigning points based on that. And you don't know what the growth target is until after everything's done because it's based on what everybody just took. So basically, if you think about that, we're doing a bell curve, and no matter what, somebody's going to be on the bottom, somebody's going to be on the top, most of us are going to be in the middle. Success-ready students, there's various different items there, but filling out like a career plan is some of that. And then graduation rate is what it says, and then the follow-up is making sure that we follow our graduates' ask, how, what are you doing now? And then we report them. And that accounts for seventy percent of our score. And then continuous improvement is twenty, twenty-one percent is the improvement planning, so that would be our C CIP plan, self-study, climate survey study. Success-ready students would be our, taking the A C T. and some of those college career type of fields, dual credit, that kind of stuff, and then required documentation, churning in what we have to churn in on time. And that's a total of thirty percent. So our A P R. scoring, here's our historical analysis of what it will be. If you hit the next one, you can see that we're at two thousand and twenty-three. The total on the bottom is a hundred and ninety-two points, as opposed to last year was a hundred and eighty. So they're slowly implementing pieces of this. Right now, we're at forty-eight points for growth. Last year, it was only thirty-six, and that shows up in our score as well. The next one, next year, there will be eight points for response to standards. I think we are looking forward to that piece of it because I think we'll get our full eight points on that one. All right, into the data. So seventy percent, like I said, is our performance data, and if you look at the points earned, the first column there, you can see that under all students on academic achievement, it's twenty-seven points that we earn, points possible is thirty-two, so we earn eighty-four percent of those points. And then the, the second line goes with each category, and that's student groups. So those are typically, your subgroups is what I think it was called traditionally in years past. So they look at only those subgroups and see how they scored. So we got thirteen and a half of those points out of sixteen for eighty-four percent on our achievement status. So when you look at achievement status, that's kind of what I showed you last month, where we improved in almost every area, and the gap between us and the state improved. But you can see, we're not getting our full points, and some of that is because you have to hit like certain, certain numbers, or you get like only a three-fourths of the points. If you look at category two, I think I highlighted it. This is the growth, so this is what's new. And you can see, we only got fifty percent, which historically we are not used to getting, but they are taking what we scored, comparing it to what other districts like us scored. So remember how well we did last year. So they're taking us versus those and then saying, well, you should be able to grow this much compared to them. But there's something in here where they also account for your economic status and the type of school and the type of clientele you have, and they adjust for that as well. So while we did not, while we showed growth in every category, we did not show growth in this category because of the way that they ranked and sorted. In our student subgroup, we got thirty-eight percent of the points. And then I will say, while, while even sitting through four hours of, of the explanation of this and trying to wrap your mind around it, and saying, well, I don't know if I fully agree with that's how I would measure growth, Dr. Parsons had an excellent point of, well, this is just a number for you as a district to look at and say, okay, well, if we didn't get the points, why did they get the points? What are they doing? And have conversation. And that's really the underlying point of this, is how can we get school districts to talk to other school districts and say, well, what are you doing? Or boil down some of our, and he said, you can't do this for the student level, but get the other data and boil it down and say, okay, what are we doing at our school if we're, say, middle school? What are we doing at the middle school? Is what we're doing working? What they're trying to do is figure out what's the impact we have as educators, because if a student shows up to a school with average educators and shows up every day, they should be learning, but we're trying to, they're trying to boil down, what is the impact that this school and is having on this individual kid? So then they're trying to take away like some of those variables as much as they can by doing some of the statistical analysis. But what, what I'm saying is, is that we would want to look at this score and say, well, we can do better, although our scores are better when we look at performance, so let's go back and look at our individual kids. Are they, if they're at advanced, did they end up advanced the next year? Or did they grow as much as we anticipated and have those conversations? I think this is a good way to open the door for us to have those conversations without being totally defensive, I think, is it? But I will also say, it's really hard to look at when you know the amount of work people put in and you see the growth that has happened, and then you're like, well, how did we not get the growth points? When you look at the next line, college career assessments, this is our A C T. We had in the past given the A C T. to all students, and now we give it to some of the students, and then they have a choice to do work keys. Work keys is included in on this, so that's part of that score as well. I do have a phone call in to D E to help me kind of break that number down a little bit more to see, is it the work keys or is it A C T.? Like, what's, what's keeping us from getting our, our full points? Advanced credit and seven-year, we're good. And so if you look at our total, we got a hundred and one point nine points, and that got a seventy-two percent of the performance points. That's only seventy percent of the total score. Our next score, continuous improvement. I almost feel like I should spend as much time on it as I did the other because that's the, we got a hundred percent, but I'm not going to. We got a hundred percent of our full points there. You can see on line four D., C T E. expansion does not apply to us, so there's no points available there. So we got fifty-two out fifty-two points, but even though that's a hundred percent of the points, it's only thirty percent of the total calculation. And so when you look at it and you boil it down, we're up to eighty percent. That's still fully accredited, which, again, even if it wasn't, they went lower people's status because they still really say they need three years of data. And so our growth scores could completely change next year, even though we do have a demonstration project waiver, because they say they kind of adjust for that too. So based on this year's data, they could have another expectation for, this is where your growth scores are. He used the analogy of a batter, which kind of made sense. He said, well, if, if somebody is playing for the Cardinals and we expect them to hit two fifty, and they end of the season hitting three hundred, we say, okay, well, next season, we're going to probably expect them to hit at a higher average. And the more data you have, the better prediction you probably can make. But he, he also said, as it keeps going up, and he gave the example all the way up to three fifty, then we should expect it to be at three fifty. But there was, I forget the term that he talks, I think shrinkage. At a certain point, you can say, well, they keep getting better every year, but somebody's not going to bat a thousand in a season. I mean, even if they bat five hundred, that's unbelievable. So at a certain point, you can predict that they're going to grow, but there's also a certain point where that growth is not realistic. And so they try to account for that as well, but I don't know how well this formula is doing that. So next year, it will be interesting to see what growth scores look like with three years of data. So here we are, two thousand and twenty-two with the new M CIP six. We had ninety-one percent of the points possible. Remember, growth was not part of that, and now we're at eighty percent. I included some charts on the next slide, so you can kind of get an idea of, this is very similar to what we're seeing across the state. So here's the first chart that was released by the state. And if you look at the categories below, this is again why I said last month, you can tell pretty much any story you want to with data. So as you look at that, it looks like a bell curve, and it looks like with the bright orange this year, it's relatively the same as what it was last year. So we had four in the upper ninety-five percent, and then last year in the seventy to ninety-four percent range, it's pretty close, four hundred and thirty-ish, four hundred and forty-ish, and then there's not much of a drop-off. In fact, you could say that this year. the number of people in fifty to sixty-nine percent increased or improved. They went to seventy to ninety-four percent. So this is the chart that the state has, I think on the front end of it. But if you dig down deeper into it, you can see the issue with the growth happening to people that were in like our category. Remember, I think we were like top sixteen? So if you look at the ninety to a hundred percent, we dropped from forty-one school districts to twenty, is that twenty-five? Twenty-six? And you can see that there's an increase in eighty to eighty-nine percent. And then talking to a lot of those districts, it's because that growth was introduced. And just having good scores, it's hard to show that growth. So you can start to see more of a bell shaped pattern as well. So our four-year graduation rate, this is part of the other, I guess, presentation, but I thought it would just go here because it's part of A P R. Our St. Genevieve line is the green line. I put a trend line there as well and then the orange is the state. So you can see that we're above the states. Our trend line is a little bit sloped downward, so we would like to continue to increase our graduation rate. Again, though, when you, we talked about like your, your number of statistics. When you have a smaller graduating class, having one or two students need another year to get all their credits, that's a bigger percentage point coming out of your percentages. So when you're a smaller school, you also, or when you have a smaller graduation rate, you have to also take that into account. Like, well, we can name this one student, this one student that, oh yeah, they needed to retake that math class. And so they have to stay for one more semester. Five-year graduation rate, I think this is more of a realistic graduation rate chart. And the state uses this as well for comparison. Basically, what they're saying is, let's look at it, are they graduating after five years of high school? And so there may be opportunities for students to go back and do summer schools, credit recovery. Are we still getting kids to graduate when maybe sometimes things were a little bit hard for them the first time? So you can see that our graduation rate is green again and it's a little bit higher than the state, but you can see the trend line is going up. So that's good news for us too. That means that the things we're doing to help students that are struggling are working. And so if you, if you keep going back to six-year graduation rate, it improves as well. And then I linked the Missouri education dashboard. They have revamped it, which I think it looks really nice. And you have to change, it always starts off with whoever the first alphabetical district is. But on the first part of it, it has the performance and anybody can go to this, they can go to Desi. If you click where it says M CIP six A P R, then you can actually look at it anytime you want. And you can look at district and you can actually look at buildings as well. But it lists our M P I's. And if that ever loaded, you would see that our M P I's are well above the states. And they broke it down by student group and all students. So if you look at it that way, you can see, well, our M P I's are, are well above the state. And then the next category is achievement growth, which we went over. And then graduation rates and then all the other stuff that's in A P R that we just went over. But if you'd like to look at that, that's another way to kind of break it down and look at it again. But that M P I piece was not in the presentation. So if you ever want to go to that, look at that, that is a good thing to do. I will say, there's always room for, and I think if you go and ask any educator in our district, they'll say, yeah, I've got goals, I'm working on this, I'm working on that. And they'll also probably tell you some things that they didn't start off with as goals that they're like, you know what? I'm focused on this as well. So this is just another tool to give us just a reflection in a moment in time to say, okay, where are we right now? What are we currently doing? Is what we're doing working? Are there other items that we need to examine and revisit? So with that, that is my conclusion of A P R. We have questions.
So somewhere in the part that you talk about the professor, doctor that gave the presentation you mentioned, he said, you know, this growth piece is part of it is a communication tool. Reach out to whoever that is, find out. My concern is, is that what the legislature also sees in that number as a communication tool or is that a measurement?
I think, I think it really depends on who you talk to. Most people want to sort and rank. And I think there is a federal requirement for us to design, even in this demonstration project, to sort. Because legally, they have to identify the bottom five percent. Even if everybody across the state was showing two years' growth for every student, they would still have to identify the bottom five percent of schools and say, well, they're not performing. So there has to be a sorting and ranking component of it. But I think it's all in the way that you frame the story and say, well, yeah, this school is maybe doing better than us in this particular area. And we would like to talk to them and collaborate, see what are they doing that's different? And then again, in their particular setting and what they're doing, it may work for them, but it may not work for school district B. So it just depends on your training, how it coexists with what you're also doing. But I would say there's a, there's a good majority of people when they look at this A P R, they just want to know who's number one, who's number two. And so they want to kind of rank it that way.
Do you know why they're looking to increase the continuous improvement piece? I mean, because that gets more out of school?
Yeah, the, the bill brief I saw, it, it was just a short, you know, two paragraphs on it. But reading into probably the purpose, it sounds like they're thinking, well, you should, if you're a school and you're teaching kids, you should be showing growth. Just because they're showing up, you know, it doesn't mean that you should be having added value. So I think like in the bill that's being proposed right now, I want to say it's about forty to fifty percent in elementary. And then it increases in secondary, which makes me think they're saying, well, yeah, you need to teach them the foundational pieces, but when they're getting ready to graduate, you should be showing growth and should be showing that this student is ready to leave. I think the underlying intent behind a lot of legislation and a lot of measurements is, is good. I think sometimes it's just the way that it's put in the practice and how it's put in the practice. I think the goal is, we want to make sure that all our students in Missouri are educated and able to go out and do what they want to do when they graduate.
Do we know who our peers are that we're looking at when comparing growth?
They don't tell you who, what sub-bucket you're in. We do have like the released data and so we kind of looked at like the top twenty. And it was, it was basically split in half. Like some didn't, half of them didn't get the growth points like they anticipated, half of them did.
So are we thinking it's, it's the, it's the big ones, you know, it's the parkways that we're being compared to or is it locals, you know?
Yeah, they say they try to compare like districts and like environments. So I don't know what that necessarily means and I think that's what's hard about this.
That's super helpful, they want you to, to work with each other, but not who you're working with.
Yeah.
Okay, what, you, you mentioned accreditation, what percent is needed for, is it seventy?
I think it's eighty.
It's eighty, that's all.
Well, there's different accreditation statuses. Ninety-five percent, I remember ninety-five percent is accredited with distinction. And then I want to say eighty to ninety-four point nine-nine is accredited. Oh, seventy, seventy to ninety-four point nine. And then provisionally is fifty to sixty-nine and then they have unaccredited.
Do you happen to recall the bill number for that continuous improvement piece?
I can get it to.
I can look it up, was it S B or H R, do you know?
It was, I think, H R.
I think the most challenging piece, looking at our scores this year compared to last year is we're trying to hit a moving target. And next year, I don't think the growth piece is going to be any more clear than this year. And if it takes a professor two hours to explain this on a podcast that we have to watch three times in order to get some kind of understanding of how growth is calculated, I don't know that that's conducive to anyone understanding the process. I, I think the concept we understand, I think it's the, the process to get there that we don't. If we're gonna call it growth, then I don't know how it can be a bell curve. Because that's a ranking system, that's not showing growth. That's telling you your growth within a continuum. So that's the challenging piece with growth. And we've always been challenged here with growth before, even in M CIP five. Because when our status is so high, we would always suffer on the growth points with the M CIP five. But now, I, I guess I'm gonna have to spend a few hours watching a video to attempt to understand because I have attended a couple sessions where they've explained growth. It's, it's a difficult concept to understand. I think some of you were here before when I tried to explain some of the statistics associated with M CIP five and how growth was calculated. Now it seems like we've multiplied that by ten. And we're trying to understand a growth piece that's relying on statistics that I need to go back to take another class to refresh my statistical knowledge of.
Senate Bill eight oh four. So I want to make sure I, I'm pretty sure I have this, but growth is not only you don't know in advance that you need to improve five percent or anything of that nature. And not only do you not have anything advanced, once the scores are produced and compared to unknown similar schools and then you're ranked in your group, you get a growth score.
Correct. And I mean, there's, there's a lot more to it. For instance, he talked about your math score is also dependent. When they go look at this information, they're looking at your math and E L A as a predictive measure to predict what you should make on your math score. So now they're not even pulling in the same subject, they're pulling in multiple subjects to make a prediction on that individual student for their predicted score. So when we talk about the demonstration waiver, we want to say, okay, well, we're gonna test three times with these benchmarks. We would like our benchmark to give us a predictive, like your student should by the end of winter be here. By the end of spring, be here. And then you can kind of check in against, well, where are we? And then you can look at, at a student by student case. It's, it was reiterated several times that this is not to be used for students. It's meant to be a thirty-thousand foot view, which I mean, is not as helpful as day-to-day practice where you're looking at individual students.
Do you know anything, is, is M A S A doing anything about feedback for the, to the state board about the challenges of M six?
Six? Yeah, they're providing feedback. I think everyone getting their feet under them to try and understand this is the first step in that. Because if we can't understand it and it's a target that we can aim at and hit, that's different from, well, it's just gonna go into the system and how it comes out is how it comes out and you're gonna be ranked. Well, okay, as long as we understand that going in, and I think a lot of the frustration with superintendents that I've talked to is we were expecting some kind of lower level growth understanding rather than thirty-thousand foot view. And if I'm not mistaken, some of that ranking came from the State Board of Education with the need to understand where your districts are with that ninety-five percent group and that lowest five percent.
As Diesel and I have talked, academic achievement should be our number one objective and I, I hate to think that we're gonna be compared to potentially other schools who maybe scored higher on their A P R whenever academically our numbers can be superior to theirs. And that's frustrating that that's what's gonna happen.
And I think at the end of the day, it's important to step back and say, is this even a measure of academic achievement? Like when you're trying to hire somebody, how many have asked, well, what was your math score in fifth grade? Like you don't, you don't care about, even your A C T score, you really don't care about that. What you care about are certain qualities and traits, like can they work well with others? Can they problem solve? Can they use some of this knowledge that they've learned in school and apply it to the situation and in our context? And I think that's a piece of that demonstration waiver that we're looking at too is like just one academic test does not show you that. How do we measure some of those intangibles that employers really are looking for?
Well, and it's clearly a complex system that we're, you know, learning, still learning. But I mean, it seems like if we, we have frustrations with the moving target, obviously, most other school districts are too unless their scores came out like they were like, wow, we scored better than we thought we would. You know, because maybe like you said, if their academic progress wasn't all that great, they may have gained a lot in growth. I, I understand all of that, but there, I think there would be a lot of districts like us that always have historically scored well. So it'd be, I would, now I really want to see, okay, so, you know, how did the Parkway School score? How I, there's a big article in the Jefferson County Leader, did you guys happen to read that? All the superintendent speak and they, I have the score, me, and they all kind of speak to a little bit about why they at least think they scored the way they scored. It's a good, it's a pretty good article. But yeah, I think everybody's learning, trying to figure this out right now.
So out of this, you know, I, I mean, the goal here, right, is to give you some sort of measure and then what can you do to improve? Where do you take this and go for our kids?
I think quailing down like, okay, well, why did we, if we can figure out why we got the growth scores that we got, I think that's important. But even if we put that to the side and say, okay, how are we measuring growth? And like as a grade level, let's say fourth grade, like let's look at how our students came into fourth grade. Where do we think they should end up? And let's measure them accordingly throughout the year and say, well, by the end they should be here. Let's check in quarter of the way through. Are, are we making a quarter's progress and look at individually? Like if a student's coming in with almost fifth grade knowledge, then are we still pushing that student? If a student's coming in with, let's say, second grade knowledge into fourth grade, are we making enough improvement to start to close that gap? And those are conversations that have always happened. I think it's just a matter of kind of revisiting that and kind of looking at it maybe with a little bit of a closer lens of, okay, well, how do we measure that? Because that's the other piece, like, well, what's out there for us to constantly measure throughout the year to see? Are they making the progress that we think they should make? Because even if you're saying it three times a year, well, what are we doing in between?
But, but the state is only using, I mean, we're using those as formative systems to help grow. But the state looks at that students, every individual student map score the previous year and then the next year. And that's how they calculate growth and if that student moves to a different district.
They said they take the previous score still.
Okay.
Use it, yeah.
Right, because that's always been a thing, you know?
And they did say they account for mobility. They said that's a very small part of the statistical analysis. So I think it's still the traditional, well, they've been with you for six months, you should have shown the year's improvement. You know, so I think it's still that kind of philosophy.
But they, I mean, even though we're doing all these great formative things along the way to help our kids grow, they really only look at those two numbers, right? Am I understanding that? Yeah.
Yeah, and sometimes you're gonna see giant, like when we're looking at science, well, we're not taking that every year. So you're not even comparing the previous year.
So related but unrelated on the student.
Success ready network?
Success ready network, yes. So we have a state waiver.
Correct.
But the goal is to get a federal waiver?
That's one of the things discussed, yeah, yeah. And so what a federal waiver would do would be to exempt them from state testing and look at an alternate method to give the federal government the information that's required. So like I said, one of those things is to be able to sort and rank. As much as we don't like it, that's what they require. So like looking at, well, if we used N W E A or some districts use I Ready, Star Test, how can they use that to still give the information to the federal government? And so I think they've talked about putting a proposal together and seeking that waiver. I think the other, the piece. And so I think they've talked about putting a proposal together and seeking that waiver. I think the other, the piece for the state that we got a waiver on is being able to display the information. Some of it's required, but some of it we want to display. So when we talk about growth, have a simple, instead of me having a 30 minute conversation on this is what growth means, like somebody could pick it up and go, well, growth is, they should, they should make a year's growth. And so somebody being able to pick it up and be able to measure that and anybody off the street or grandma across town can look at it on our dashboard and say, okay, well, the district's doing well, or hey, we need to pick it up a little bit. Make it a little bit more accessible to everybody.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item on superintendent's report is principal reports. As you can see, there are no principals here. We've had four days of school, um, leading up to this board meeting, so we are going to revisit principal reports at next month's meeting. Uh, there are no safety reports in your package. And that's the end of my report.
All right. Thank you, sir. Unfinished business and we have a Prop S G update.
So I wanted to cover some numbers for you. Uh, we've been looking at a lot of pretty pictures and getting excited about buildings and facilities and but we do need to get down to some of the budget numbers as we move through them. So Bloomsdale Elementary is complete and that came in at $818,000. St. Genevieve Middle School is in progress and we have a pretty solid number of about 1.7 million dollars. The Early Childhood Center bids have come in and we are estimating about 8.2 million to complete that. And then St. Genevieve Elementary at six and a half million. And that's a very loose number. That's still a bit out there. We have no, I mean, we have a design, so that's going to be depend on bid packages and how those come in. So that's a total of about 17.2 million dollars. If you will remember, um, we had the facilities committee reconvene uh, to talk about priorities. And that's when Bloomsdale Elementary, I'm sorry, the Early Childhood Center got moved up. And St. Genevieve Elementary got moved up and the high school project, uh, gymnasium and wrestling facility underneath of it was discussed as if, if something has to be cut because of a lack of funds, that would, would be cut. Brock Miller Construction stepped in and said, you can put that thing on the ground level and do a gymnasium on the ground level and maybe do a separate athletic facility. So it all evolved into, um, we think we will have enough funds to do a wrestling facility of some kind. Uh, with the hopes that we will have enough funds to do a wrestling slash athletic facility of some kind. And that may include a shell of a building that at some point in the future will include an indoor turf type area. Or it could include the indoor turf type area. But I wanted to give an update on this. A lot of times uh, some coaches, if you don't talk about their sport for a while, or you don't talk about the wrestling facility for a while, or it doesn't come up in conversation. People think you might have forgotten. We haven't forgotten them. It's still on the agenda. Just because we're not talking about it doesn't mean it's not there. It means that these projects are going full force and all of our attention, all of the architect's design time is spent on all of this and adjusting as we go, addressing problems as we go through the middle school project and now early childhood center as well as next on the agenda. And then hopefully St. Jen Elementary, uh, this summer sometime. Go back just to make sure I covered everything. I did want to share that the way the district was able to pull down, uh, the $20 million, uh, we were able to invest those funds. And along with bond proceeds from selling those funds and interest associated with those funds, we've been able to accumulate about 1.8 million dollars. Um, so that is huge. In thinking about saving money through the process and doing some value engineering with Brock Miller Construction to minimize costs as those budget proposals come in and having the funds left over to be able to build a quality facility, wrestling facility or wrestling slash athletic. So cost-saving measures are key. Uh, I, I know that the C M A R process, Brock Miller Construction takes a percentage. But the expertise that they bring to the table and the cost-saving opportunities that they bring to the table have been indispensable throughout this process. We've got a great relationship with K R J as well as Brock Miller. Um, and we're looking forward to, to working with them for our final projects. Onto St. Genevieve Middle School. Um, looks pretty plain from the outside, but it, it's really exciting when you get inside. They've, they have drywall up now. They have removed the chain from the door in the hallway and now have a temporary wooden door that gives you access to what will be the counseling suite. And that's what we're going to see here. Three, two offices and one meeting room along with an entryway, handicap accessible entryway from the back parking lot as well as elevator access. And you can see some of those offices there. Those were taken today by Mrs. Otto. This, you can see the color up on that upper right-hand wall, the green and the yellow. That's upstairs and that's where the bathrooms will be along with elevator access. And it's, it's interesting to look at the color choices throughout the years in old buildings like that. I think we have a salmon pink up there along with that green and yellow as well. Uh, Bailey, you might have to help me out with this. Uh, these are dragon tracks and all middle school students and faculty and staff wrote little notes and their names on these dragon tracks. Really?
Pictures of Shrek.
Yeah, whatever they wanted to put on there, kind of their, their stamp on, on the dragon track and on, uh, that new facility. You can see in the upper left-hand corner, that is a it's a time capsule that all of the dragon tracks are going to, were placed in. And those are now in the wall. Right? There. So this is the entryway from the back parking lot and on the opposite wall is going to be the elevator. Uh, and so before they put the drywall in that time capsule with all of those dragon tracks from every middle school student and all the teachers in the middle school was placed in the wall there. So at some point in the future, that thing is going to be opened up. I picture it opening up with a steam coming out. So we're really excited about, um, the time capsule and the dragon tracks. Uh, this is some of this, thanks Bailey. This is some of the students completing those dragon tracks. Uh, and I think the majority of them did it in advisory. Early childhood, uh, we just went through, uh, some value engineering with Brock Miller Construction and K R J Architects. We didn't have the final, we were hoping to have the final number for you tonight on, on the value engineering number and what we were able to say. We anticipated somewhere in the neighborhood of $53,000 off the top of what the bid packages came in. Back up before we get there. Uh, St. Genevieve Elementary, um, we worked with Bowman Construction, Bowman Excavating to identify some additional, uh, parking opportunities that we might have to address some of the parking concerns that we're going to have when St. Genevieve Elementary construction begins. We're hopeful that we will be able to start that as soon as school gets out this year to be prepared for those parking challenges as we start the school year next year. And I've covered the athletic facility slash res- wrestling facility. Um, I just want to assure everybody, um, everything's still on the table. We're, we're continuing to be fiscally responsible and save as much money as many places as we can while taking advantage of those investment opportunities. Uh, with the hopes that we can build something quality wrestling wise at a minimum and hopefully something that most of our clubs, groups and organizations can take advantage of. And I believe that's all I have for Prop S G updates. Question? Yes, we did. Thank you for inviting me, Mrs. Blue. That was on my list, I'm sure somewhere. We were a, we were presented with an opportunity that there might be some FEMA money, um, for our area. And we submitted an application. Unfortunately, that application came back and that money was already spent. They said, uh, we're, we're hopeful that they might, uh, look at your area again and earmark some more money for your area. So just hold on tight. Well, unfortunately, our building project has to continue and you cannot, uh, use FEMA money for a project that you're, you've spent design time. That's one of the qualifications. You can't have designed it already. So, um, unfortunately, we're not going to be able to go down that avenue between FEMA money. Absolutely.
Yeah.
The issue with that is that's going to change. So right now that is basically a metal pole bar. That's going to be reinforced. Um, so that's going to change the entire structure and make it brick and mortar. And it's going to take the cost from where we are and it might. And if we continue to be fiscally responsible and bids, you know, costs come down and bids come in, uh, that are attractive, I think it might be an opportunity. It's definitely worth keeping in our back pocket and considering.
Is this that grant that it has to meet the qualifications of a safe room?
Correct.
Right.
They, we asked that question. They are unsure. We, we had to contact them twice in order to find out if we, if we qualified for the grant in order see, we were just in the process of qualifying to submit the full grant. So we would have still had to submit the application for the full grant and we would, it would have been a waiting game then as well. So.
So I guess there was so much money in your market. It got grabbed.
Yeah.
It was a hell, it was a pretty short window.
It was, yes, I think it was like a three day window. When we got back from the conference, we had to put that together and uh, that company, um, that, that you guys were able to be in contact with was really helpful in getting that complete. And they had all the background information already done. So it was worth a shot.
You talking about the, um, Stormwater Basin? There's an article in the Herald coming out this week about that and the city thinking they're going to put in even a larger stormwater basin now?
So I was not able to attend that meeting or watch, um, the video of that meeting. I, I was in contact with Brian Keim, our mayor, several weeks ago, uh, in, in reference to increasing the size of the water main. And in those conversations, we had talked about, um, the district partnering, uh, with the city, uh, to maybe take on a portion of that. And we're absolutely willing. I think, I can't remember Mr. Bova, the acronym that you used regarding increased stormwater runoff.
I think the permeability would create 20 more.
Right. And, and I think Taylor Engineering, who works with K R J Architecture is the one who came up with that number and provided it, um, to the city. Yeah, we're definitely willing to partner with them because we understand that there's going to be a, a small portion of increase based on the amount of asphalt slash concrete slash roof area that we are going to put over there. But there's also a lot of other land leading to that, uh, basin, whether it's a retention pond or whatever they're wanting to call it. If it's retention pond or
be a, uh, uh, yes, retention pond. Yeah.
So what's the cost difference between? I guess I should rephrase it. So we need the big water main over there to help with sprinkler system. Whether you do bigger water main, you do the storage, water stored, no, the technical term is there, but do they have an obligation to put that in for us?
They do not.
Okay. And so
to clarify, that's on a long range plan for them to improve that area of the city. What we're asking them to do is to move that up in their timeline. In order to do that, they have to adjust some of the other expenditures that they would have made. The last time we spoke with them, they seemed willing to hear a proposal. We gave them a, uh, an estimate of what a proposal might be. And right now, um, Taylor Engineering and Brock Miller Construction are in the process of getting a bid package together so that we can take back to the city and present to them. Our hope is that they will say, uh, they're able to move some expenditures to a later date to take the place of the water main that they would have replaced and replace the water main, uh, in conjunction with building the early childhood center. Until all of that is hashed out and agreed upon. We have to be good neighborhood partners and we are going to be good neighborhood partners. And if that means that we have to enter into the conversation what's our financial responsibility of a stormwater basin or a retention pond or whatever they're going to call it, we're absolutely going to enter into that conversation. I'm, I'm sad that I didn't get to go because hopefully I would have been able to answer questions and tell the alder people the same thing that I told, uh, Brian Keim.
Based on the article that's coming out, I mean, Mayor Keim said the same thing, that right, must be a partner. But so, um, we're asking them to, to re, um, allocate or redesign their, or planned, I think it was for 2025 probably corporately.
I think that's correct.
Planned anyway. Um, we're asking to bump that up basically. And then we'll assist with the, the basin. That's the school's official.
That's one option. Okay. I think a couple, uh, alder people mentioned that they, they, what's the district willing to, to pitch in for the, uh, water main upgrade? And I said that, you know, best case scenario, you would be able to move it up in your timeline and, and move some expenses around and be able to complete that. But that being said, we're willing to come to the table and talk about it.
Great. Just trying to understand that the, uh, the cost of putting the if this, if the city's not willing to bump that up far as what the cost is of us doing that on our own, if that's even logically possible or, you know, I don't know, versus having them change their timeline, us contributing to the basin and
I think the original estimate, which is very soft numbers, um, was $275,000. Do you remember offhand?
Water mains or basins?
Water main.
Okay.
Cause I think it was a 200 foot improvement. And that was for a four to six inch water main. Since then, the engineers have come back and talked about perhaps an eight inch water main. Because the increased cost from a six to an eight inch, um, is not going to be a significant, uh, amount. But of course, we, when we went and talked to the city, we talked to them about a six inch water main. So we want that to be the proposal with, well, if we moved it to an eight, which would actually improve water volume more, uh, this would be the additional cost. And we don't want to bring something to them that we didn't talk to them about first.
And, and we originally thought that the, uh, main would have to be all the way from ninth across Maple. Is that correct?
We were afraid that it was all the way down at the intersection down the hill.
Ninth and Maple.
Right. But they found it and I think it ended up being a little closer and I have 200 feet away.
So still 200 feet?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions?
I do. So I just wanted to double check the 1.8 million. Is that a combination of?
Bond proceeds?
Well, the, the bond proceeds, interest and the savings.
So bond, when we sold the bonds, when we sold the $10 million bonds, we've received additional funds. Trying to think the terminology Courtney used. Can't think of it offhand. Uh, but we
Basically issued a higher interest rate.
Yes.
People were willing to pay more for it because of the guarantee rate higher. So they paid more money to us for the bonds.
So selling the bonds in and of itself, we had some additional money there. And then we took that money and invested what we weren't spending currently and came up with a draw schedule, um, with our investing partner. And the interest then and the bond proceeds totaled to 1.8. The savings that we were able to save on Bloomsdale Elementary was dictated in the $818,000 number there. And then the middle school, um, savings was dictated in the number that I put on the screen.
That 1.8 billion doesn't even include what we've saved in high cameras and computers this term.
Value engineer.
Value engineering.
Correct.
Okay. I think premiums are usually, right?
Yes, sir.
Premium that
Premium on the bond.
Yes, 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 yes. So 1.8 million in addition to the $20 million bond, in addition to the savings from the value engineering.
Correct.
And that should lead to a wrestling room and maybe the bones of a, I call it a multifunctional athletic.
Yes. So, so in our conversations, it, it was always if, if we take the gym away, what's going to happen with wrestling? So we So we thought that it was important that we said at a minimum, we are getting a wrestling facility. With the hopes that we can, building wrestling facility and, uh, Brock Miller Construction brought a couple different examples, I think Cape. Um, they were down finalizing plans at Cape Girardeau for one, and then Farmington I know has, uh, an indoor athletic facility as well that, uh, Dr. Phil and I toured. And so it's some combination of that with the minimum, no, no, uh, conversations about not doing a minimum of a wrestling, so.
Sorry. Is it, is the current facility, the current wrestling, going to come to the weight room then, still planned?
So yeah, all of, it's, it's kind of a.
I know that was the weight room and then it was the visitor's locker room and it.
Right, all of those updates were contingent upon what we were going to be able to do with the wrestling facility slash athletic facility, so the dominoes will fall as soon as we're able to identify that facility and what that looks like, and then it, the dominoes will fall down to the current weight room becoming visitor locker room, I think we were talking about at one point, and the wrestling room becoming a, a bigger weight room and all of, or a couple bathrooms in there, I think we were talking about.
Some of that, though, the early talk in the facilities committee about locker rooms, we did that in-house.
We did.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, um.
That's already done, isn't it?
Yes. Our maintenance crew, um, did a fantastic job with that and it, it, it looks great, it needed to be updated, it was dingy, they updated it to LED lights and I think they're pretty happy with it.
So, I mean, while we're back on it, we might as well ask, so, you know, I know the other projects, you know, are ahead of it, but i- if all goes as, you know, hope, when, when would the wrestling slash athletic facility maybe tentatively be in the line?
So I talked to Brock Miller about that and it's contingent upon early childhood center progress and completion. Up to this point, our weather days haven't been too bad. Um, Mother Nature has been cooperating and we haven't been significantly delayed. Um, if that continues, um, which it may or may not, I don't know. Um, that, that, that's a different animal out there because it's, it's out in the open and it's, you know, muddy right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Mrs. Otto and I drove out there to look at it, see if we could get some updated pictures and it was covered in snow and there was parts that were muddy and stuff, so that's going to be impacted more by weather.
Sure.
Um, it would be a shot in the dark to say when we would be able to start that at this point because the early childhood center is just getting started because St. Jen Elementary hasn't even broken ground yet. Um, and it's going to be dependent upon when they're completed and what delays we have with those before.
And as G E begins with school getting started.
We are hopeful, yes.
Let's see, sorry.
Do you think you'll have the, the final numbers of our early childhood?
I think we can have pretty good numbers soon minus architect fees. Because architect fees use, are ongoing with changes that happen, um, as you come across obstacles. Um, I've got our architect fees up to this point for them, um, but they're, they're soft numbers because they, they continually come in as they, as we make changes and work on things or run into obstacles and have to change things. This, the, the water suppression system is going to be a big, and until we have that nailed down, architect fees are going to be looming over us with any changes that might have to be made.
Eight point two is very close.
We were, we were happy with that number, um, because we were estimating about eight point two five, eight point four million, um, several months ago, um, so.
In the beginning, what was it estimated at?
I think it was in that neighborhood.
Right there.
Yeah.
What's the final timeline on some elementary, so it's, it starts at the end of the school year till, it must be now, give or take.
Uh, the middle school was start of the school year to end of the school year. Bailey, can you remember, I can't remember offhand.
Now you had that timeline, it was built a while, but.
And that, we haven't updated that in several months either, uh, based on our progress.
Parking.
I'm thinking twelve to eighteen months.
So.
Little team.
Probably at least. Eight year and a half.
It'll get done.
I, I joke every time I show that graphic because the graphic is a timeline and all of our projects on the timeline, and then there's one line in it that says today. And every time I show that, I say the only thing accurate on this graphic is today, because all the rest of it's going to change. Any other questions? Thank you, there were some healthy topics coming, so I appreciate it, thank you for your patience back there in the audience. Uh, next we have instructional program presentation, middle school facts. Bailey, did you put that in? Uh, where did you put that in?
Eight B.
Where?
Where you were.
Here. I think you.
All right, so I teach middle school facts. And I'm going to start off with the first class I have to take, so it's a progressive, um, type of thing, facts one, facts two, um, and I started a new, um, class this year, I eliminated facts three. And added a, um, introduction to culinary arts class. So this is, um, for facts one, kind of the week's broken down, um, the first week intro, we go, I go over the syllabus, we go over a classroom, we do, um, kind of get to know you activities in the classroom. Um, weeks two through three are interpersonal relationships, which I'm going to go over them each separately. Um, we go over time management, values, fabric care, sewing, um, safety, the shirts, um, hand sewing, we start our sewing projects which take, um, wait from weeks eight to twelve, um, and then we move into the cooking portion, we go over kitchen safety sanitation, kitchen basics, and then we do our food, um, labs, and then I include food groups in that as we go. Um, so interpersonal relationships in this unit, we talk about, we do a personality assessment, so, um, I have them get on, um, I believe it's sixteen personalities dot com, they go through. Um, and at the end, it gives them, um, a name of what their personality type is and, um, it tells like all kinds of information. Friendships, uh, workplace habits, um, just to let them kind of, um, learn a little bit about themselves in the classroom or as a person, actually, um, and then from there we go into, um, I also talk a little bit about, well, I go into friendships from there, sorry. Uh, friendships, so the personality kind of helps them learn about who they are, um, what kind of friend they could be. We go into friendship, um, which is really important in middle school because that's the kind where they're starting to form those really close, um, where they're getting away from their parents more and forming bonds with their classmates. Um, so we talk about friendships, how to be good friends, toxic friendship, toxic friends, um, good friends, their qualities. Um, and then I also talk a little bit about peer pressure within that, um, because I feel like that's also important in middle school. Um, from there we go to communication, how to be a good, um, communicator, um, not just with their friends, but with their family members, I talk about using iMessages, um, and how how they are so used to text messages and how like if they have an issue, they shouldn't really deal with it through text message. Uh, they have a hard time with that concept, but I tell them how tone of voice can mean everything and I give them some examples. Um, hopefully it'll, it'll, you know, set with them and they'll be like, okay, well, I shouldn't do this, I shouldn't do this. Um, and then from there I go into conflict resolution because that's part of communication too, how to resolve conflicts peacefully. Um, and that we all have differences, but does it mean we can't get along? Um, and then how to be a good leader, um, what are some leadership qualities, um, what makes them a leader? I have a do, do assignment where they pick, um, five teachers in the middle school or coaches that they think are good leaders and um, why they think that, and then five students that they know and why they think they're good leaders. Um, then we go into time management and values because with their cell phones and electronic devices, they're very good at wasting time. So, um, I talk about, um, I have a little presentation about time management, um, time wasters, like what are some ways we waste our time? Obviously, the number one thing is video games, phones, Snapchat, TikTok.
Yes.
Because you can just keep on going on for hours and you don't even know it and, you know, I talk about how like they're in school and they may, need to make sure like they said right for the important things. Um, and from there I go to the jar Y, um, I show a little video of professor in a jar and he puts pebbles and then, um, sand and rocks. And I tell them, you know, you put the important things first, then you have time for all the little things too, but they're important things, so I have them, um, I have a digital copy of a jar with pe- rocks and pebbles and sand and I have them write down examples of what their, um, what their important things are, they're not so important and their, kind of their time wasters are. Um, from there we go to fabric care, um, we talk about, I tell them, teach them how to do laundry. Most of them, you know, how to do laundry, so that's a good thing. Um, and this class is mainly made of, uh, those sixth graders, I do have quite a few seventh graders this year, but mostly sixth graders, so I talk about laundry. Um, they do a little research on standards, they go along, I talk about it, um, and then I talk about ironing and they actually, I get out the irons and they actually practice ironing, it's funny because they all love it. I'm like, do I have to go more ironing?
Right.
Um, from there we go into the sewing unit, um, so first we talk about sewing tools, hand sewing tools, um, safety and then machine parts, so, uh, they do hand sewing, um, in this class. And, um, they don't really, a lot of them don't like it, but a lot of them do like it. Uh, most of them really want to go in the class, so. Um, but it is neat to hear, uh, parents come in at parent teacher conferences, they're, they say, oh, my, my son or daughter asked for a sewing machine for Christmas. Awesome, um, sewing ma- sewing machine parts and functions, um, and then they have to take a sewing safety, uh, test first before they can sew. It can get really dangerous with the sewing machine, so I always want to make sure that they, they know that these don't. So, um, the hand sewing, um, so they have to sew, um, four different stitches and then they have to sew a button on by hand. They get frustrated with some of it, uh, this is one of our projects which involves hand sewing and machine sewing, so, um, they find a design, uh, and they have to cut it out in felt, I print it out on paper, they cut it out, they pin it, they trace it, they cut it out, they hand sew it onto their pillow. That, then they hand sew and stuff and then, uh, or machine sew, sorry, and then at the end they have to hand sew it closed. Um, their second project in this class is an apron, um, and so we just have patterns and, um, they have to cut all, everything out, trace it and then cut it out, um, and then on this project, it's all, um, machine sewn. Um, we have about twenty-one machines, I just got ten new, uh, baby lock machines this year, so, um, but they were. All to do, all right? Um, after we're done sewing, we go on to kitchen basics, this is where they get really excited. Um, I like to do it at the end of the year because that's when they start kids fancy, um, so it keeps them busy, but uh, I talk about safety and sanitation, I tell them that's the most important, um, part, um, of what we're doing in that class as far as the kitchen. Um, especially because they are cooking, um, with a group of kids and everybody's eating the food, so it's important. Um, reading a recipe, uh, which is very important because some of them struggle a little bit on that, some stories I've heard about, um, burning their ramen. They forgot to add water. So I go over reading a recipe, uh, I show a little clips of Ratatouille, uh, about that, um, just about kitchen management. Um, kitchen tools, we go over that, we take a little test over kitchen tools, um, because the, the hardest part is teaching them three dry measuring cups, liquid measuring cups, um, they want to use tools for different purposes, but I always, I say, well, here we're going to use this for this, okay? Um, dishwashing, um, sometimes they, they use cold water to do dishes and I know you have to use hot water to really get different results. Um, and then, uh, also measuring, um, abbreviations and equivalents, okay? So as we go through cooking, so the first thing I introduce is microwave cooking, um, because a lot of them, you know, parents, sometimes parents don't want to have their kids cook while they're not home, so microwaving is a little bit safer, um, choice for them. So we do microwave cooking and we make, uh, microwave monkey bread and they love it, it's really good, it's easy, if you've never had it, you can make it. And then, so we talk about the different food, food groups and then we cook something, um, in that food, and I'm always changing it because I'm like, oh, that worked good, but sometimes with the time constraints, uh, I struggle with some of the recipes because I want them to sit down um, at their tables and eat and not scarf it down and still have time to do the dishes. So I'm always changing this stuff, but, um, we talk about eggs, we talk about dairy, grains, functions of ingredients, uh, and then fruits and veggies. Uh, so facts two, um, is mostly composed of seventh graders. Um, and these are the weeks broken down. So we talk about personal standards here, so wants, um, in these, wants versus needs, what are things that you want, what are things that you need? And most of them already know this, but it's good to sometimes make them think a little bit, like, you, you know, you want a cell phone, but you don't need a cell phone. Tell them, and I was twenty-two years old before I got my first cell phone and I, I survived. Uh, we talk about values, like things that they value the most and it kind of goes along with facts, um, one, but it kind of goes a little bit deeper into the subject. Um, and I feel like at this age too, they start thinking a little bit more about those things that are important to them, okay? Um, we talk about goals, uh, which is really important, I feel like in the middle school because they're getting ready to go on to high school. Um, we talk about long-term versus short-term goals, the SMART goals, I have them create a SMART goal for themselves. And I have them create a vision board, I give them an example, um, they do it digitally, uh, like what's your goal in, uh, at the, by the end of school year, what's your goal at the end of high school, what's your goal, um, by the time you're forty? And they kind of do that, they also do another thing where it's like, uh, with the values thing, I forgot to say, where like, I could, they create a presentation about what they want to be like when they're forty and they put a picture of what kind of car they'd like to drive and what kind of house and what their profession is. So I say, I, I just want pictures so that I can look and say, I, I know you value this, like family because you put down that you want to have four kids. I, you know, you value this living in the country because you're, you have this house and it's set in the countryside, so that's with the vision, uh, the values and it kind of goes along with the vision board. Um, then we move on to the family unit, uh, where we talk about the life cycle of the family, the different cycles, beginning, um, to like empty nesters. Um, then we talk about the different types of family, um, that's, that we have, that we could have. Um, we talk about what makes families strong, um, and then, then different family challenges that we face. Um, and I kind of go a little bit deep into this one, um, I feel like it's important to know that we talk about fa- family challenges, especially at their age because they're starting to understand things a little bit more. Um, and things that could come up and how they can handle it, different things going on, like even moving schools. Um, or, you know, simple things like some, you're somewhere and your family loses a job, like what can you do, how can you handle this? Okay. Uh, we have a caring for, uh, children unit, uh, where I go over babysitting, uh, because this age they um, are starting to babysit, which is a really good gig. I didn't realize until after I had gotten like, how much do you guys pay? And I'm like, oh my god, we got paid like twenty dollars, they get paid like a hundred. Um, so babysitting and I talk to them a lot about safety, um, there's this, um, girl on YouTube, she's called Babysitting Boss and she has a lot of videos out there and she literally goes through all kinds of things, um, and they're short little clips, they hold the kids attention, but it gets them understanding like news and don'ts of babysitting. Um and they're short little clips, they hold the kid's attention, but it gets them understanding like news and don'ts of babysitting. And then we talk about child care skills. Um so we do so in this um class too. So their sewing project number one is the stuff bag. And we just review the sewing safety, I give them a little cahoot, um and we review it because they've already taken fact one. Um so this little cinch bag, um and they they use them, I see them, they'll bring them to class. There's two little pockets up there. And then they have boxers, uh which is is kind of a challenging project for a lot of them. So um this semester, uh I'm gonna give them a choice between the stuff bag and the boxers because. We do felt monsters, so this is one of my favorite ones. I um I saw this years ago on Facebook and um at my previous job, I didn't do the sewing. Um and then my first year, I was like, oh, it's too new. And then um Mrs. Hupman said something to me and I was like, oh my god, I've been looking at this project. So I I picked two, I pick a kindergarten teacher and I I rotate through them. And I pick two students to go talk to the kindergarten class and I take handouts of these papers of monsters. And the kids, the kindergarten kids, they create their monsters on paper. They color them, they cut out eyes, they cut out a mouth, they have ties or necklaces or hearts, any accessories, hair. So the kids create their monster on paper and then we create them in uh with felt and make them three D. And the kids, each kid gets um a different monster, uh they hand sew them together. And then when we're done, we go down to the um classroom and we deliver it to them. So here's some examples, like that's the paper and then that's the one that she sewed, um all of them. And then there's the kindergarten and they love them. I know um Amy Meyer, her son was in the, and she came in, she's like, he has a horn and he was devastated. She's like, he absolutely is attached to that thing. So the kids, the students, my students love the project. They are, they get really excited and I think like, you can see the smile on their face. They just love how the kids, the little kindergartners, they just love it. So it's one of my favorite ones. Um it takes a little bit longer, so that's why I've given them a one choice for the for the sewing project. Because it takes a little bit longer because it's a lot of hand sewing. Um and then cooking, um for these topics, we go over baking basics, um yeast breads, we make homemade cinnamon rolls. Uh we do quick breads, muffins, and then we talk about breakfast food. So each um class has about eight labs, um as far as fact one and fact two. And then pretzels, uh biscuits and gravy. And ma- mostly everything is from scratch, because I feel like it's really important. Um and I talk about how cost effective effective it is um to make everything from scratch and how much healthier it is for them. Um sometimes they get a little frustrated, but they they end up liking it. Um and in fact two, we do a cupcake war, so we pick a theme. Um and so last semester, it was Christmas, but there was like different themes within that. So they had snowman, Christmas tree, um reindeer and Santa. So they come up with a design, they come up with a cupcake, a flavor and all that stuff and they cook it, then they go to the next slide. Um the teachers are judges and they have a little sheet. They come in, they sit down, they tell us, they talk to the students while they're eating, just like on cupcake wars. Um they get, the the teachers really get into it, but the students just love listening to what they think. Um and then this is the new class, intro culinary arts. Um after my first year, I realized how they didn't wanna really sew. Um like they wanted to take fact three, but they, the sewing, they were kind of burnt out on. So um they have a passion for the cooking. Um so I figured I would create a class that would kind of talk about that um and deal with that. So here is just a breakdown of everything. Um so we talk about front of house jobs and it's also helped them think about careers. Um I push the careers in the food industry, um in the restaurant industry on it a lot too, just to see if it sparks an interest. Um I talk about back of house. Um and they do a research, a career research project too, where they each get assigned a project in that, or a career in that field. Um foodborne illness, hygiene, kitchen hazards, which they've already learned, but I, this is a whole new level, so I dig a little bit deeper. Um I do the food service equipment, um knives and silverware, but it's a lot different from your kitchen at home. Um cooking methods, I talk about dry cooking methods, moisty cooking methods. And we cook a lot, apparently we cook like twice a week, um just because that's, we'll do something like dry cooking method, moisty. You know, every week, it's just something different. Okay? Um herbs, spices, flavorings. So for this, we do a pesto pasta lab, um and they actually surprisingly love it. They think it it looks gross, but and they try to, this is the main thing. Gotta step outside our comfort zone. Um food presentation um is also a really important part. I, every time they make something, I make them plate it. Um and then I take pictures, I have a Google form, I send it to the teachers and they vote to see who did the best job. Um salad dressings and dips, so we do a salad lab, um homemade mayonnaise, homemade salad dressings and homemade hummus. Sandwiches and pizza, um calzones and then homemade pizza. Stuffed soups and sauces, we make marinara and zuppa toscano. Um the intro baking, um we make homemade cookies. Eggs and dairy, um we make homemade butter and eggs benedict. Uh fruits and cooking, uh types of fruit cooking and then vegetables, um charme torche with uh strawberry coulis and a vegetable frittata. And grains, dry pilaf, we make homemade pasta. Um and then we talk about how making meals healthy. Um so they take a not-so-healthy meal and then they modify it to make it healthy. Meat poultry and seafood, chicken, cacciatore and Indian shrimp curry. And we do a food truck, so it's kind of like cupcake wars, but they make their own little food truck, they design a menu, they color it. Um same thing, judges come in and they judge them and they tell them what they think of their meals. So that's some of what I do.
Yeah.
Can we be judges?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I I just wanna, I just wanna say that sometimes people say, well, we need to teach kids how to take care of themselves and cook. Well, we do.
I know, I say it all the time.
Or you just route all those comments to Melissa Otto and she'll take care of it. Whether it's finance or.
We need it.
Alright, thank you again.
Yeah, that was great, thank you.
Alright, on to new business and we have a draft copy of the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar.
Give me just a second. So it's a little small on the presentation. I pulled up a PDF copy uh on the screen here and you have a copy of it in your packet as well. Um I'm just gonna hit some highlights. And once again, this is a rollover draft uh from the prior year. There are a couple changes that were made, uh the committee thought it was appropriate to make before sending it out. But the survey is out now, uh as I checked, before I came over here, I think we had just over a hundred responses. Uh sixty percent of which said it looks good, um and then forty percent of the respondents did reply with the comment. So the committee will gather all of those comments, uh take those into consideration before presenting you a final proposed draft at next month's meeting. Um so just some highlights, the first day of school is Monday, August nineteenth. Uh the end of first semester is Friday, December twentieth. Uh we will have two full weeks for Christmas break again. Uh classes resume after Christmas break on Monday, January sixth. Spring break uh is still incorporated into the calendar from March twenty-fourth to March twenty-eighth. And this is a significant change from last year because Easter was from this year. From this year's calendar, because Easter is early and we were able to incorporate spring break with the Easter break and the eclipse. Uh next year, the eclipse goes away.
Yes.
Easter moves really, really late. And so putting spring break uh with three or four weeks left of school didn't seem like the right thing to do. So the calendar committee chose to move it up a couple of weeks. And so that's uh March twenty-fourth through the twen- Uh Easter is Sunday, April twentieth. Uh prior year was Sunday, March thirty-first, so a significant change with Easter. Uh the last day of school is scheduled for Friday, May twentieth. Uh we have five scheduled makeup days. Uh graduation was also a change, uh in conjunction with Dr. Boyd at the high school and some faculty consultation. There's some conflict with the state track meet, should graduation be left the following Saturday. So he took it back to uh his faculty and kind of kicked it around and uh considered whether that should be an option or not to move it to the tenth. I don't know if you guys remember or not, but when I was a teacher here, we would have graduation on state track and there were several times they couldn't make it back. And we had to take a picture of them in their gowns in Jefferson City. Dr. Boyd feels like that's not something that we need to.
No.
To make our kids do. They they have, they've earned the right to be here for graduation, we need to do what we can.
They earned the right for the your state track.
Yes.
That's two separate things and definitely shouldn't be.
In addition, they, um I hope I don't get this wrong. They combined classes, so I think class one, two and three are all on the same day. Up to this point, there's only been two classes. And so they would get done even later and but if anybody has to stay for a black presentation or a winning, you know, it's a medal or anything. Then they're gonna have to stay after the meet is over and then they're not gonna be able to get back. And the last thing we wanna do is put them in a pickle trying to rush back. So uh we propose that graduation be moved up a week to Saturday, May tenth.
So graduation, uh state track meet is the seventeenth?
Correct.
Yep.
Is that, is that still districts?
Isn't it sectionals?
Or sectionals, sorry, I mean.
Yes, but that's usually closer?
The only, so some feedback, uh.
Sure.
What about the, I mean, I don't, we don't want kids to miss, so does it have to be eight P M? It'd be seven?
Could it ever be Sunday? We we don't even go there.
Right, just earlier, I mean, it's eight, it's, I don't know, these are just some.
Well, I think originally it was moved late because state track meet was there.
And then, and right.
That and then they both.
And if it's still gonna interfere with sectionals and cutting it close, we're, don't change it, but I don't know, it's just.
I'll take that to committee.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be discussed.
It's definitely feedback I've got. Move it out, move it out.
Yeah, I mean.
Don't have it on the same day and move graduation.
I'll take that feedback to the.
If you want.
There you go.
There you go.
For two cents.
Yeah, yeah, and check with the track coaches, sectionals can still run long, not as.
They can.
State and it's not that far away. But but tell those kids, get home and shower and get there.
Yeah, they they might be cutting it close better if they're back. And then if it rains or something.
So they play it an hour, would they come back?
Seniors will be missing.
They'd be missing.
Six days.
Yes, and then that's without snow days.
Correct.
So then.
Are we cool with that?
That's why Dr. Boyd wanted to take it back to the faculty, to be sure that he he got any input, anything that he wasn't thinking about. Uh regarding anything associated with graduation. Uh typically, when I was teaching, I can remember, it was about a week, graduates were gone. Uh that the hall seemed a little emptier as we finished school. And then I think slowly over time, it it reduced a day or two here or there.
Are they giving enough hours in the year? Is it late? Subject to that?
Yes.
Six days, seven hours, correct? And those are snow days.
Yes. That's gonna have to be a consideration.
And I guess because of the project graduation, we still really like to keep it on Saturday night because it keeps families Sunday to recruit.
It's usually on Monday, Tuesday.
So uh good feedback, thank you very much, I'll take that back to committee. Uh and we will, I think the survey closes this Friday. Uh I sent a reminder out today, I thought a snow day would be a good day to get in there. Get a reminder to complete that survey. Uh so we'll uh disaggregate that data, put it all together, uh the committee will make a final proposal and we'll bring it to you next month.
The Christmas break seems, it was good this year, but I bet the teachers are gonna like it more because I was in that, I was in the building the last day and they're like, we don't have eggs for Christmas.
I know, it's stressful.
They were pretty.
Pretty struggling.
That last Friday.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have the addition of early childhood center director.
Uh Dr. Dreary and I uh gathered a couple different job descriptions for early childhood director and we've been. This has been on the back burner in the back of our minds uh for several months now. Especially with uh definitive decisions on the early childhood center having to be made regarding classroom and makeup. Uh as we get to the point where we have to start ordering furniture and what that furniture looks like. I mean toilet height, sink height, door openers, door closers, not to mention the fact that we need to. Begin, which I know this has already happened, but begin thinking about the structure of classrooms and reimbursement uh for for teachers in those classrooms. We think it's the right time to create the early childhood director position. Uh hopefully start interviewing for that position and get somebody um identified, uh hopefully by February. Uh bring that to you all so that they will be on the front lines of being a director in that building and having some input. And being able to talk to those other people in our district who have a stake in the game. And are part of our early childhood programs currently. Being able to manage all of that input and understand from an early childhood perspective, which I am not. I come from high school and a middle school background, so when we start talking about toilet height and uh sink height and what's appropriate and should there be a step stool? And should there not be in order of the safety concern, there are a whole bunch of variables built in here. That somebody who spends their time in early childhood and has a background in early childhood needs to have a say in. Because I, I don't wanna make a a financial, a a decision on sink height or a decision on door closers or openers, what that might look like. That three months in, an early childhood director's gonna go, who made this decision? And it's gonna cost us a lot of money to fix it. So I think we need to have somebody identified and the first step in that is is to create the position. We uh went over several different job descriptions and um really identified what our priorities were and uh what we think. This job will entail, obviously, at some point, uh we're gonna have to, as we get into it and and the job dictates what the specific duties are or aren't. We would adjust this accordingly. But we think this is a good start uh in identifying uh the position and then ultimately who's gonna serve in the position. I would like to get it out uh this month and hire in February and come up with a pay structure. Because obviously, it's depending on who the person is, I I don't think it needs to be a full-time position initially. I think being a a consult, having consultation duties, decision-making duties, uh as we finalize everything in that building is important. So depending on who it is, if it's somebody in-house or if it's somebody out of house, if it's if it's going to be a limited contract. I I thought about putting a contract together or a contract proposal together, it didn't make sense because we. I, I thought about putting a contract together or a contract proposal together, it didn't make sense because we don't know who that person's going to be. Once we identify that person, um, if they're in-house and already working here. Then that's going to look different, that contract or the addition of days will look different than somebody who's external, should, should it be somebody who's external. I think that, I think that's going to be combined.
Will this person be an administrator?
Director.
So why do they need an advisor's degree to higher education, educational administration?
Because there are significant administrative duties related to, um, funding. And, and what their, the structure that they're gonna have to put in place in order to maximize the amount of reimbursement we can get.
Is that gonna knock out a lot of potential good applicants who don't have their ed, his administration degree?
It's possible, Doctor Drury, you might be able to speak a little better. It, it depends, fully staffed, there's ten classrooms, so that's a ten teachers plus aides. Secretaries, yeah.
I don't know, that's the one part that concerns me is that, I just think, I'm gonna. We've got some really good people I know and that would be great as a position.
Well, and that, I don't know that that's going to. Qualifications are there because it's a best-case scenario. Um, those people who might not meet all of those still can apply. Um, and then if they, especially if it's a conversation with somebody internal who almost, uh, is there and that we have a relationship with and we know. Absolutely gonna interview them and, and, uh, give them a fair shot.
And if they got all the other qualifications and we really feel that's the best person, they can go. With the, in the admin, um, degree.
What are you thinking about? In half month?
So, uh, we're not sure. I think I had a board member tell me if the thing wasn't open twelve months, why are you building it?
I don't know, who would've said that?
If it's, if, it just depends on, on how the structure shakes out and what that summertime looks like. If it's going to be, um, childcare in the summer. Or if there's gonna be program in the summer, uh, what that looks like, because if there's programming in the summer, then obviously we need. Administrator there to run the program. If it's going to be, um, more of a daycare type situation in the summer and, and I'm not qualified to say which it should be or which it's going to be. That needs to be the director of the facility, um, to really see what the needs of our community are. And adjust as, as those needs are identified.
I, I think it's hard to, and I understand everything you're saying there, but, uh, I think. Knowing if it's a twelve-month position or a ten-and-a-half-month position, it's gonna hinder some of the applicants you're gonna get if they're internal. Because they're gonna say, I want my summers off or I don't want my summers off. And I wanna make sure that we don't hire someone based upon, that they're assuming they're getting a ten-and-a-half-month. Role, when early it's a twelve-month role and that's the expectation. They should have, well, of course, we never run out of just from twelve to ten and a half, but we need to assume they're gonna be doing twelve months a, a year.
I think that has to be a conversation during the interview process.
Will they be paid, uh, teachers', uh, salary?
So it's gonna be based on, on the base salary, uh, but all directors are, are in their own category now. So it'll be included in the director category. No. And that's, that's another conversation. We may have to start it as a director and it may have to fluctuate, uh, when, you know. This person gets hired and gets into the position and says, this really needs to be, if it is a ten-and-a-half, this really needs to be a twelve-month position and here's why. But identifying that going in is really providing a false front for what it is. I, I don't wanna tell somebody it's a ten-and-a-half-month position, I wanna tell somebody that we need your expertise. In this position to tell us whether it needs to be a ten-and-a-half month or it needs to be a twelve. We can reach out to other school districts and see what they do, they're not us. Um, so we could base it on what they do and, and then have a hard line and a twelve-month contract and then have to back off or vice versa. I, I would rather have whoever's hired in this position participate in that conversation and bring their expertise to the table. Saying I think we're safe if we start out here and then if we need to adjust, we can take it back to the Board of Education and get their input on it.
Do you think? Do you think? Central candidates for this, because Eric's brought it up, Josh has brought it up, are they, are they worried in their head that? If you're gonna be this position, I think you have an idea of what it is already. But is, are, do you think that's gonna hinder candidates or that I, ten-and-a-half month versus twelve? I don't.
I mean, I feel like budget-wise and there clearly are ways the center would could generate revenue in the summer months, but. I mean, that's quite a big difference in budget, depending on what happens in that building, so I think even though we need this individual's expertise. I think this individual is gonna be looking to, to you, to us, to define it as well, they, they're not gonna be able to define it.
So you mentioned earlier too, we'll create this position, I mean, obviously we're adding payroll, but it's also gonna take over a position. That is currently organizing early childhood.
Doctor Drury being.
But based on what you have now, we have early childhood coordinator. This position could take over those job roles.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Not explaining all the numbers and all of that. The center opens based on numbers, you must be, you should have numbers that are set guideline. You can get reimbursed for so many students that you have. And you have to figure your tuition costs, your tuition base kids, your free, produced, your ADA students, which is a lot of. So we're looking at all that, what position. And what position that you can do in. So at this point, we really even haven't defined, even though we know there's ten classrooms, we really don't know how many we're filling. You know what I mean? We're waiting, we're, we're still in.
We absolutely don't know.
Yeah.
With, the ten classrooms was based on conversations with committees on, we don't want rooms sitting empty to build it too big.
Right.
And then every facility we talked to said, you're gonna need more classrooms.
Sure.
As soon as you build it, it's gonna be full, so we tried to, to pick a middle of the road and this wasn't a one-person or a two-person decision, it was a committee decision. On the ten classrooms, we think that's a solid number, uh, we, we have space out there, should it grow? Um.
I guess, so here's why I'm at, I guess, poorly agree, we need a director who understands, uh, nuances of, of building and what happened. Like you said, it's a lot, a lot of my relevant other expertise, but as a board, we need to decide, are we looking at. Wanting to have the facility open twelve months a year? And if we are, then I would, personally, I would expect that person to be a twelve-month employee. Not to be a ten-and-a-half-month employee and so I think that as a board, we decide what we want to be doing. I am also, uh, like you was a little Jamie said, you're building it, why are you not having? I'm also the same impression, you're building this building, why are you not offering this childcare? Is it, um, pre-k, is it daycare? How do you define what's gonna be? I don't know, but I think deciding first, do we want this open twelve months a year? And if so, then this role needs to be a twelve-month role. Because I, I, I just don't wanna hire somebody and then them come back and make all these decisions for us, be like, oh, no, you're making this twelve months, sorry, I don't want that.
It's not gonna happen.
But you can't say that yet because you don't know who the app, you don't know who the.
I can say that because. I'm going to be involved in the interviews and during the interviews, we are going to be very transparent about the fluidity that currently exists because the building's not even built yet. So there, there's gonna be no, um, I was told ten-and-a-half month and so I don't want it. It's going to be, the likelihood this is gonna be a twelve-month is high. Uh, you could take all that off the table if you'd like to make it a twelve-month position. Um, but what I'm telling you is there's gonna be no deception in the interview process and then whoever. Goes through an interview process is gonna understand the fluidity that exists with this. And is gonna understand that the likelihood is gonna be a twelve-month, it's really, really high. Uh, we're not sure, could be a ten-and-a-half month, if you're making a decision based on ten-and-a-half month, uh, because you want your summers off, then this probably isn't the right fit. Uh, but that's always, you try to be transparent in the interview process so that whoever's getting the position is the best fit and there are no surprises on the back.
As long, as long as we're transparent at that.
We always are transparent.
I'll share the, besides housing, the second most thing I hear that we need more of is childcare.
Yes.
And, uh, over and above that, little childcare.
Yes.
Which this facility unfortunately is not going to be able.
Right. It means that zero to two or two to five.
Right.
Definitely, either way, the answer is yes, we can do more two to five childcare.
And I don't think our town has the absorption to take over those summer kids.
No.
Should take, take those kids over summer.
Yeah.
If they're here, here in school year.
Agree.
Good questions. Any others? I'll make a motion to approve the addition of an early childhood center director position for the district.
I have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion clear.
Uh, nope, any personnel changes approved during closed session this evening will be provided. The draft meeting minutes within seventy-two hours of adjournment.
Yes, I'll, the next motion. Uh, I make a motion to adjourn the, oh, oh, it's, oh, we, I always do it wrong, resume. I'll get it when.
Promises by each other.
That's right. Okay, I make a motion to resume a closed set meeting with a closed record and a closed vote for the purposes listed in revised Missouri statute. Section six, one, zero, point, zero, two, one. And we need a roll call vote. Thank you. I don't think I've done that right since we've changed formats. All right. All right. Now we will take a roll call vote, Jamie Blue.
Yes.
Eric Bosler.
Yes.
David Boba.
Yes.
Carolyn Diesel, yes. Josh Gettinger.
Yes.
James Kirchner.
Yes.
Martin Reesinger.
Yes.
You know, seven, zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.